We'll go ahead and begin this meeting, and this is our biannual organization meeting. And, once every two years, I start this council meeting, as we, at the moment, don't have an elected mayor and vice mayor. But here in a moment, the five members of council will take that action, and then I'll turn the meeting over to the newly-elected mayor. So, with that, I'll call the January 2, 2018, meeting of Oakwood City Council to order, and ask you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
So, as I say, this is our biannual organization meeting, conducted in accordance with Section 2.09 of our Oakwood City Charter. And, the first two items we have to take care of tonight are to elect a mayor and vice mayor, and we conduct this organization meeting on each even-numbered year, and if the -- it has to be done on the first Monday of January, and if that happens to fall on a holiday, which it did this year, why then the meeting, according to our charter, must be conducted on the following day, which is tonight, Tuesday, January 2. So, I mentioned we have to elect a mayor and vice mayor. We also have to administer the oath of office to any newly-elected council members, and in this case, we have two re-elected council members, and so I'd ask our city attorney, Rob Jacks, to administer the oath of office to Ann Hilton and to Rob Stevens. All right, if you'll both raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Ohio, and will obey the laws thereof, and that I will, in all respects, uphold and enforce the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of this city, and will faithfully discharge the duties of city council member upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you. And now, I would ask for a motion to nominate a member of council to serve as mayor and a member of council to serve as vice mayor. Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Bill Duncan for mayor and Steve Byington for vice mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lori, could we have a roll-call vote, please?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Sure.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Your Honor, the meeting is yours. Well, you did a very good job, Mr. City Manager. Thank you very much, and thank you guys for, you know, your support, and we look forward to representing the rest of the citizens to the best of our ability. And that's it for my speech. Do you have a speech?
I do not.
You do not have a speech, okay. So, the next item on our agenda is a report on the minutes of our December 11 regular executive and work session. Mrs. Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I have reviewed the minutes from those three meetings, and I've found them to be correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. Our next item, under Status Reports, is we have a captain promotion, and you already heard what you have to say, so there will be a test. But, I'm proud to announce that we're going to -- or we have promoted Kevin Brzinski to the office of Public Safety Captain, and with him tonight is his wife, Missy, and their children, Jake, Emma, and Molly. They're going to come down front and join me as I give the oath of office to them, and also, in attendance, is his -- or his in-laws, Frank and Darlene Schnell, and his brother-in-law, Brian Schnell. Where are you folks? Okay, great, thank you all. So, I'll come down, and Kevin, if you want to come up? Perfect.
Kevin's promoted effective today, but before he's sworn in, I think it's only appropriate to make a few comments about Kevin and his career. Kevin began his career with the Oakwood Public Safety Department in March of 2010, when he was hired as a public safety officer. In that capacity, he served as a crew public safety officer, providing police, fire, and emergency medical services to our community. Prior to coming to Oakwood, Kevin served for 14 years as a firefighter/paramedic with the Dayton Fire Department, working various assignments. In addition to being assigned to a firehouse as a firefighter/paramedic, Kevin was selected to fill a specialized vacancy position on the heavy rescue apparatus. This assignment is truly where Kevin developed his knowledge and his ability for structural firefighting, as this piece of equipment responds to all confirmed structure fires within the city of Dayton. While assigned to the heavy rescue, Kevin responded to literally hundreds of residential structure fires. In 2008, Kevin made the decision to leave the firefighter rank and sought promotion. Subsequently, Kevin was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, finishing as the top candidate on the promotional process. During Kevin's time as a Dayton Fire Lieutenant, Kevin supervised firefighters, dispatchers, and was assigned to the Dayton Fire Training Center, where he was responsible for training new recruits, implementing the in-service training program, and providing employee professional development. Here in Oakwood, Kevin was promoted to the rank of lieutenant for a second time in December of 2015. Since that time, Kevin has served as the Crew Two Supervisor. Relying on his prior experience, Kevin easily transitioned into his new role and quickly became effective leader for our department. In addition to his crew responsibilities, Kevin has oversaw our fire inspection program and has served as the fire training coordinator for the last several years. Kevin is the consummate professional. He's a natural leader. He possesses all the intangibles to inspire, motivate, develop, and influence others. He is dedicated to this department, and he's committed to the residence in which we serve. Kevin is a native of Montgomery County. He graduated Northmont High School. He earned an Associate's Degree in Technical Study and Emergency Response Technology from Sinclair Community College. In addition to be a certified firefighter/paramedic, he's also a state-certified EMS instructor, fire safety inspector, and fire instructor. As valuable of an asset as Kevin is to our department, he's even a better man. He's a man of faith, who goes through daily life with purpose and guidance. He's a devoted husband to his wife, Missy, and to three of his five children are here today, his gymnastic queens, Emmy and Molly, and his son Jake, Ashley, who hopefully will watch us tomorrow on replay. He thinks of you often, and he speaks of you. Kevin's promotion today embodies the hard work and dedication that he has demonstrated throughout his career. I look forward to working close with you in this capacity, and with that, please join me in congratulating Kevin on his promotion to the rank of captain.
So, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Ohio, and will obey the laws thereof, and that I will, in all respects, uphold and enforce the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of this city, and will faithfully discharge the duties of public safety captain upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations. And Missy's going to put his pin on for his captain badge.
That's my wife.
Yes.
She practiced.
Okay, all right. And then, next, we have a recognition of Crew Number One in an event that happened here at City Council two months ago, and I'll turn the floor back to you, Chief.
Your Honor, Council, Mr. Manager, as you guys were aware, on November 6, 2017, Crew One responded to the council chambers on the report of a person ill. Recognizing that something was not right, together as a group, they worked quickly to assess the patient, begin patient care, and transport the patient to a local hospital, where shortly thereafter, they underwent a successful surgery, a life-saving procedure. Frequently, our safety officers respond to calls for service just like this, but they do not always occur in the public forum. In cases involving a significant medical event like this one, the decisions and the interventions that are performed by these trained professionals often plays an important role in the patient's outcome. In our profession, there's no greater impact that we can have than have the ability to have an impact on one's life. On November 6, Crew One, led by Lieutenant Keith Benson, did just that. For their actions, I present each member of the safety department standing before you with a letter of acknowledgement which reads as follows. On Monday, November 6, 2017, you, along with your fellow crew members, responded to 30 Park Avenue on the report of a person ill. As a collective group, you worked together to initiate an immediate patient assessment and provide patient care. The patient was quickly transported to a local hospital, where they underwent a successful surgical procedure. There is no doubt that your excellent care and fast work played a part in the successful outcome of this patient. I want to recognize you for your efforts. I want to formally congratulate you on a job well done, and again, thank you for your efforts and your contribution to the success of the Oakwood Public Safety Department.
be someone at your house in less than two minutes. It's -- I've known that, and I've said that for now, coming on nine years. But when you see it happen right in front of you, the person was sitting right there, where Chuck is sitting, and the crew came in and immediately took charge of the situation, got this person to go to the hospital, had he not gone to the hospital that evening, he would not have survived. So, the actions of Lieutenant Benson and his crew, and all you guys, you've had similar experiences to this. This is something that is just unbelievable, and why we have a public safety department cross-trained in all three disciplines, that makes it a reason why you want to live in Oakwood and raise a family. So, I commend all of you, all you folks. I said it last year, and I'll start this year, is we have the best public safety department probably ever in the history of Oakwood, and it's by far the best in the entire region, and we appreciate all the work that you do for us. Does anyone else have anything they would want to add?
Well said, Mayor.
All right, well, thank you, okay. And you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, but it's really going to be exciting.
I like them all lined up here, I feel real safe right now.
We do feel safe.
We brought out the A-team tonight.
We do have, as an administrative thing, for our first meeting, we have council committees, where a group of two of the five of us will meet on different areas, as it relates to, like, public works, or public safety, law and minutes, meeting, and certain people are representing in community functions. And, the only change, I won't read all of those committee assignments, but the only thing that has changed is we have flip-flopped Councilmember Epley and Councilmember Stevens to represent the city on the Miami Valley Communications Council. So, all the other committee appointments are the same as what we had two years ago. And, if you will bear with me, I'm trying to find our committee appointments for volunteers, and I had it totally organized before I got in here. Let's see. That's it, thank you. You have it, okay. We have a lot of citizen volunteers in Oakwood that volunteer, you know, at no pay, and do a lot of things to make our city the city that it is. Some of the committees that have been created over time in the history of Oakwood, they're all created by a city ordinance, and we have terms that generally expire over alternate We have an ADA compliance committee that was set up a long time ago, when the Americans with Disability Act was put in place, and William Stevens has agreed to serve another five-year term on the ADA compliance committee. We have our own Board of Health in Oakwood. We still have one vacancy, and she has not called me back yet, so as soon as she, you know, accepts, we'll announce her committee. Our Budget Review Committee is important. It's a 35-member committee, five people from each of the seven precincts in Oakwood, that meets four times, or sometimes more, a year to go over, to review our financial results during the year, and we get a lot of very good input from them about city projects, what our priorities should be, and ultimately, they help us with putting together the budget and endorsing the budget which we passed at our December meeting. Some people that terms are, we have one new member that's going to be joining us this year in Precinct A, and that is Sarah Wector, and then we have Charles Campbell is going to serve an additional term in Precinct A. In Precinct B, we have Howard Booze and Frederick Dudding, they're going to serve again. In Precinct C, we have Brian Huesman and Lee Turbin. In Precinct E, we have Jim Bros, and we still have a couple other vacancies that I'm waiting for responses from. We have an environmental committee that's responsible for a lot of the events that we do, the holiday lighting, you know, the Fall Festival, you know, various other, I can't remember them all, Carol, but you've got one going about every other month, and they help you with that, all the Johnny Appleseed tree selections and that type of thing. Darrell Apt has agreed to serve again, Stan Herr, Jane Lieberth, and Nancy Droes. Jane and Nancy are here, and they're on the agenda next, so we're excited that they've agreed to serve again. We have one person, one vacancy, their term had expired on our planning commission, and that's Harrison Goudy, and Harrison Goudy has agreed to serve an additional four-year term. And then, on our property maintenance committees, those are people in different districts, we have five districts there, and these are people that go around and help our city determine if property owners need to improve, or, you know, paint their homes. They also are responsible for some of the, you know, just making sure, getting selections for beautification awards and that type of thing, but their primary job is to make sure that our property maintenance code is enforced, and they send recommendations to our former Assistant City Manager, and then we would deal with those homeowners. And Chuck Ellis in District A, and Cheryl Young in District D have agreed to serve again. So, that is where we're at to date on our committee appointments, and we'll have, as the rest of these things fill in, we'll probably at our next meeting, fill in the rest of those vacancies. So, do I have a second for approving these property, or these committee needs?
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, so ordered. So, now, we have our holiday decorating awards, and are we going to do a video first, or we're just going to, I'm going to come down and we'll present these folks the awards? Great. I will put my glasses on, so I can read the awards. So, we have awards for both daytime and nighttime, Christmas lighting primarily, and am I, okay, they're in this, what's on the screen is the same order as I have here. All right, great. The first winner is the Weida family, 420 Skank Avenue. Are they here? All right, well, we will make sure that we get that to them. Thank you. And then, the next one, yep, that's a nighttime winner, Doctors Charles and Mary Bain, 5 Volusia Avenue. They are not here either, all right?
It's a cold night.
It is rather cold. We really appreciate all you all coming here, you know, tonight. The next one is Alan and Tracy Ambrose, 61 Beverly Place. We will make sure the Ambroses get their award. The next one is Sally Jo and Anthony Stamen, 601 Woods Road. It's really cold. And then, the O'Connor family, 1306 East Shance Road. They are here, congratulations. Make sure he smiles for the camera. The next one is December Green and David Bales, 304 Foer Boulevard. Are they here? All right. The next one is Beth and Jeremy Wilson, 324 East Peach Orchard Avenue. The Wilsons are not here. We're going to give these out in the spring, maybe. The next one is the Musselman family, 26 Corona Avenue, and he is here. And then, we have Cindy McHugh, 1815 Coolidge Avenue. And we have Allison Cowan and Andrew Smith, 1700 Ridgway Road. Uh-oh, this has got something special on it. Aha, okay. And this one is the Hallermert family, 330 Southview Road. I do not see him, okay. And we have Melissa and David Stackhouse, 51 West Foer Road, and he is here. Congratulations. And then, we have a business award for the Oakwood Business District, and we have, oh my goodness, it's the Toasty Barker Boutique, 2306 Far Hills Avenue, and she is here. Congratulations. These ladies here had everything to do with it. I had nothing to do with this. This is my daughter. Go shop at the Toasty Barker.
Thank you.
An unsolicited plug. And our final award for the day, or the night time is your neighbor, almost, 2316 Far Hills, The Flower Shop. Is The Flower Shop here? Well, we will make sure that they get that, and congratulations to all the award winners. I mean, it was probably one of the prettiest years ever. I mean, it was tough making all these decisions, so, and thank you guys for your assistance, too. We really appreciate it. All right, so, we are now to the visitors' part of our agenda, and this will be the time where anyone wants to address council on these or other issues, this will be the time we would have you come down and state your name and address for the record, and welcome. Does anyone wish to address council? I have a couple folks here.
Thanks, everybody, for everything you do. I've lived here 21 years, and I get it, Oakwood is a great place to live. Tell people that ask me about it, you can go walk in at 10 o'clock at night, and you don't have to look over your shoulders like I would have in Brooklyn when I was in training for my residency. But, and you guys are awesome, too, really appreciate you. I don't want any of that to be mighty, but what I might say now. I appreciate Mr. Byington and Ms. Hilton, last time this issue came up, voting no, and I guess extending the time where we didn't have to consider these extra taxes. Thank you, Mr. Duncan, for responding to my email, so I could understand the Oakwood registered story better, about what exactly was going to be asked of citizens that work in Dayton, Kettering, Centerville, wherever, not Beaver Creek, and not Oakwood. So, you're asking for us to only contribute 90% of what we pay other cities to our Oakwood tax, and pay the additional difference to Oakwood, which would make part of my taxes two and three quarters instead of two and a half. Every year, you guys do a great job putting out the budget, and putting it online, and sending it to us. You're saying you're trying to raise $600,000, hopefully by doing this tax proposal. From 2008 to 2014, the average difference between the budgeted amounts and the actual expenditures was at least $1 million a year. It dropped down to .85. 2015, in 2016, last one, you have the numbers for it, it dropped down to .4 million, 400,000, but that included paying for almost a half-million-dollar parking lot, which I don't think you'll have to do again anytime soon. So, my point, just like last time, is you budget high, and you come in low, you're proud of it, you always make that announcement in the budget. It's great that you do that, I appreciate it. It's not the other way around. But $600,000, in light of what you normally budget and actually spend, I think, is an imaginary number. It doesn't really, it's not a crisis. Mr. Keith sent me my final appraisal value, I think everybody else probably got one, too. If they're anything like mine, it went up, because sales are better these days. Ours went up 17%. I know the schools get more of that money than you guys do, but I don't know if you took into account the fact that most people's appraisals are going to go up on their property taxes, and that will contribute extra money to the city. I believe, over the summer, you passed finally the final approvals for the condos that are going to go up at Point Oakwood. I could be wrong about that. The hope is to get extra people living in Oakwood, high density, less, I mean, there's going to be a lot of people hopefully paying taxes, not requiring a significant increase in the services because of the nature of the small area that they're in. I think there's some revenue that's not, maybe wasn't accounted for, I'm just bringing that up as, maybe it has been. I haven't been to the meetings. Mr. Byington, you pointed that out the last- Mr. Byington, you pointed that out the last time that people that say they weren't aware of any of these things just weren't paying attention to the meetings. I'm guilty. So I bring that up. If Oakwood needs to raise taxes, I just feel they should raise taxes on everybody. And if you wanna have that 90% contribution limit, but it should be a citywide thing. It shouldn't be, I don't have the choice of working in Oakwood due to my profession. There's finally a hospital in Beaver Creek, but I don't work for that and so I, I don't work for the anesthesia group that staffs that, so I can't work there and give you all my tax money since Beaver Creek doesn't have a tax. I think it should be, if the city needs money, the whole city should contribute. And with the passage of the new federal tax law, meaning we're only gonna be able to deduct a very small portion of our state, city and property taxes off of federal income, an increase in taxes for some of us is not really exciting. So, just things to consider, primarily the fact that you always come in under budget. $600,000 is less than the $900,000 you were trying to reach a few years ago, so I think you understand the limited nature, the diminishing return that you're gonna get from this kind of a process. Other cities will continue to raise their taxes diminishing what we give you even when you cut our contributions and cut our exemption. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
It's like Centerville raises theirs to two, the amount I can, you know. Anyway, the exemption will be smaller, the amount that you get from this will become smaller and smaller as other towns continue to raise their income taxes. So eventually you are gonna have to raise everybody's taxes to get what you want if you really need it. So I just propose that you go ahead and just raise everybody's taxes now across the board, make it fair to everyone. Don't pick on people that live here but will have to work elsewhere because there aren't the jobs that we do here in Oakwood. Thanks very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions for him?
All right. Thank you, thank you. I would point out, when you're looking at the budget versus the actual for expenditures, that's comparing expenditures to expenditures. We have another chart in our group comparing revenues to revenues. And so, the revenue line is less this year than the expense line, but you are correct in saying that we try to be careful in our budgeted expenses so that we don't have overruns. So I appreciate your comments. Who else would like to address council? I know you, but I need you to state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
My name is Dick Lipowitz. I live at 259 Spirea Drive. You know, I didn't know that Jay Weiskircher was retiring from the City of Oakwood. I just wanted to say a couple of things about Jay. You know, I've been an attorney in this town for, well, in this greater community for 37 years. And in my professional capacity, in my personal capacity, I've dealt with Jay quite a bit on behalf of the City of Oakwood. And I wanna, I wanna just say, I think, you know, he's done a tremendous job for the city. And he has always been responsive to matters that I've brought up, whether it's professionally or personally, and I really appreciate his service to the city. I also wanna thank our police force for what they do. I was very impressed with the presentation to the people that were involved in the life-saving incident. You know, but I wanna turn to the subject of this tax credit reduction factor. You know, I strongly believe that this is a tax increase and being a tax increase, this is something that needs to be taken to all of the voters of Oakwood. Back in 2014, two members of this council, who are still members of this council, voted against a similar measure for the reason that it was a tax increase and it wasn't being presented to all of the voters of Oakwood. Since that time, I've spoken personally with a third council member shortly after he was appointed. And he too expressed to me personally that he preferred that any tax increase be voted on by all the citizens of Oakwood. I'm just concerned that this measure is sort of taking the easy way out, that it's something that if you do it once, you'll do it again. It does constitute a tax increase to people such as myself who work in the City of Dayton or people that work outside of Oakwood in a municipality that has a municipal income tax. And, you know, we're not lucky enough to all work in Oakwood or one of the townships that doesn't charge tax. I mean, the increase, according to my calculations, is gonna be anywhere between 2 to 2 and 1/4%. I know my taxes will go up between $400 and $600 per year. And my concern is, you know, we're singling out people that, like I say, work, live in the city but work outside of the city. There is nothing fair about the municipal tax system here in Ohio. Unfortunately, I don't have any control over that, but I also don't see how it's fair that someone in my circumstance should have to pay total municipal income taxes at 2.75% when others only have to pay 2 and 1/2%. You know, I think the best, I'm not saying the city doesn't need the money. I would certainly support an overall tax increase that affect all the citizens of Oakwood. I think this council needs to go out, as they did back in 2013 with the property tax increase, educate the voters and then put it to a vote of the citizens. Again, I feel very strongly about this. I would ask the council to rethink their position and in light of the time of the year and for that matter, the weather tonight, to maybe consider tabling this measure until the next meeting when maybe there can be some more public debate. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Lipowitz? All right. Thank you very much. Who else would like to address council at this time on this or any other matter? All right. Then we will close the visitor section of our meeting and we will go then to legislation and you guys can go ahead and go. This is gonna be a long resolution.
Thank you all of you for being so kind and promoting our agenda.
Well, he deserves it.
He most definitely deserves it.
He, he, he was obviously raised very well.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Our city manager, Norb Klopp, wants to say a word or two about assistant city manager Jay Weiskircher who, as Mr. Lipowitz said, is retiring from the city after 35 years of service. So Norb, I think, I'll give you 90 seconds.
Okay. I promised council I'd be brief here and Jay, forgive me, because I know, and I'll tell everyone listening here and watching from home, you know, Jay is one of the most humble human beings I've ever met and I know this kind of public recognition is not something that he, he looks for or seeks and, but when you serve 35 and 1/2 years for one community with the distinction that Jay served, why, we have to do this. We have a rather lengthy resolution that the mayor will read here in a few minutes, but let me just make a couple of quick comments. You know, besides being Halloween, October 31 will forever be a date I'll remember and that is for the reason that that's the afternoon that Jay told me that he was going to retire at the end of the year. And, you know, I, you know, after 35 plus years of serving Oakwood, I knew this day was coming, but honestly, you know, one can never be prepared for that sort of an announcement. The last two months went by very quickly and I can report to council and to our community that Jay worked to the very, very end and gave everything, as you might expect he could, to this community just like he did for the previous 35 and 1/2 years. We had a wonderful recognition for Jay at the Kettering Brain Oakwood Chamber of Commerce annual breakfast back in early December. We have a biannual city staff recognition banquet for years of service and again, we recognized Jay. He received his 35-year award at a luncheon about the middle of December. And at that little luncheon, we informed Jay that we were going to put a plaque at the Smith Gardens pavilion walkway in his honor and it reads, "In honor and appreciation of 35 years of service to the Oakwood community, J.A. Weiskircher, 1982 to 2017." And then about a week after that, we had a beautiful luncheon here in this council chamber. I think it was very fitting to do that event here and enjoyed a couple hours of wonderful camaraderie with Jay and a great meal. And we presented a plaque to Jay and I'll just read it very quickly. Presented to J.A. Weiskircher, Assistant City Manager, April 26, 1982 to December 31, 2017. In recognition of over 35 years of outstanding service to the citizens, businesses and employees of the City of Oakwood, city council staff and the entire Oakwood community thank you for your tireless work over a long and distinguished career. Your innumerable contributions to the Oakwood community can be readily seen in all business, residential and recreational areas of the city and will remain as a longstanding testament to your excellent leadership, keen foresight and unceasing commitment to excellence. And I'll just end by saying that in all my professional years, I've never met a finer man other than J. Weiskircher. And Jay, thank you very much for all you've done for our city.
With Jay tonight is his wife, Ann, his daughter Kristin and Katie, and Kristin's fiancee, Toni. Could you all stand, please? Congratulations to you as well. For the record, Toni, now that I've been re-elected mayor, the high revised code gives me the ability to marry people. So, you know, if you just wanna stay a little bit after, you know. Okay. I know you have much more exciting wedding plans than this. But let me, let me read this resolution. It is rather lengthy, but it deserves to be, it deserves to be said. Whereas on April 26, 1982, J.A. Weiskircher was hired by the City of Oakwood as Personnel and Recreation Director, a position he held for three years. And whereas on March 18, 1985, J. Weiskircher was appointed to Assistant City Manager, a position he held for 32-plus years. Whereas in addition to the duties of Assistant City Manager, Mr. Weiskircher assumed all responsibilities associated with the positions of Director of Human Resources and as Director of Planning, Zoning and Property Maintenance. Exhibit A to our resolution provides a partial list of the specific responsibilities he shouldered. And whereas J. Weiskircher served as Project Manager for many exciting and important community projects over his long career, and whereas during Mr. Weiskircher's tenure and with his direct involvement and leadership, the City of Oakwood engaged in many significant issues and projects. Exhibit 2 is also attached as a, as a partial list. Whereas J. Weiskircher has served City of Oakwood with an unmatched sense of duty and personal integrity and represented Oakwood with the highest degree of professionalism. Whereas during his 35-plus years on Oakwood staff, J. Weiskircher served with the utmost distinction and worked tirelessly to maintain and enhance the wonderful attributes of the city. Whereas through his distinguished career, J. possessed the keen understanding of what makes Oakwood a very special community and was guided by that understanding in all of his actions and decision-making. Whereas J. Weiskircher will forever be remembered for his strong work ethic, deep understanding of governmental issues and his ability to apply calm and reasoned judgment even in the most challenging situations. Therefore, be it resolved by the council of the City of Oakwood, that the council in the City of Oakwood accords a very special public recognition of J.A. Weiskircher for his 35 years of outstanding public service to the City of Oakwood. On behalf of all Oakwood residents and businesses and members of the city staff, past and present, city council expresses sincere thanks to J. Weiskircher for his many contributions to the Oakwood community, contributions that can be readily seen throughout the city and will remain as a longstanding testament to his public service. And, do you want me to read the exhibit A and B? It's pretty cool. It's a trip down memory lane. No? Jay says no.
Too bad you don't worry.
We'll skip A and we'll read B. How's that for a reasoned compromise? These are some, just some, remember, of the issues and projects that Jay worked on from 1982 through 2017. In 1982, lay Continental at 333 Oakwood Avenue converted from apartments to condominiums. They established the Natural Area Advisory Committee. In 85, the 30 Park Avenue City Building Improvements. 1986, creation of the Leasur Services Advisory Board, creation of the Leasur Services Director Position. 1987, closing of YMCA and opening of the Oakwood Community Center, formal establishment of the Citizen Budget Review Committee. 1988, establishment of the Oakwood Income Tax Department, implemented registration and inspection requirements for rental properties, implemented licensing requirements for home occupations, remodeling of the Oakwood Community Center, created the Leasur Services Department, established the first community-wide recycling program in the Dayton region. In 1989, developed the first Oakwood Comprehensive Plan. 1990, transferred the Oakwood Building Department Services from Dayton to Kettering. 1993, renovation of Schaefer Park, construction of Carrington of Oakwood Assisted Living Facility, the Far Hills Business District Streetscape Study. The Citizen Housing Committee was changed to the Property Maintenance Board. In 1995, established the Beautification Awards Program, the Far Hills Business District improvements. Jay honored as the Dayton Area Managers Association Assistant City Manager of the Year. 1996, Fairage Park Reconstruction, Oakwood Schools Latchkey Program. 1997, published the Sub-Area Plan for the NCR Sugar Camp and Far Hills and Shance Area, OCC improvements including the Health Center, first use of banners in the Far Hills Business District. 1998, developed and published Oakwood Business District Design Guidelines, New Corporation Signs. 1999, first lease of the old, NCR Old River Property, construction of the CVS Pharmacy. In 2000, the new Public Works Center. 2001, Oakwood Zoning Code Update. 2003, NCR Sugar Camp placed on the market, establishment of Shabbat of Greater Dayton for Jewish culture and education. 2004, the new City Public Safety Building, Far Hills Streetscape and Pedestrian Safety Improvements, published the NCR Sugar Camp Sub-Area Plan Site, Development Alternatives and Guidelines, developed and published a second Oakwood Comprehensive Plan. In 2006, purchased the Old River Fields from NCR Corporation, developed the 2500 Far Hills Retail Center. In 2007, NCR transferred Hawthorne Hill to the Wright Family Foundation, Oakwood Investment Group Inversent Master Plan for Sugar Camp and Point Oakwood, Oakwood Acquires a four-unit apartment at 19 Wonderly Avenue, Oakwood City Council approves a special use permit for Hawthorne Hill. 2008, Oakwood Centennial Celebration, reconstruction of Orchard Lee Park, demolition of the four-unit apartment at 22 Orchard Drive and construction of a municipal parking lot. 2009, rezoning of 6 Oakwood Avenue to Neighborhood Business District, approved the Stormwater Management Code, established Francine's Garden at Howe Extreme, Park Avenue Parking Lot Improvements. 2010, first annual community document shred event, approved the Athletic and Recreation Master Plan, purchased the parking lot on Orchard Drive behind the Oakwood Club. 2011, opening of the Grace Learning Academy at St. Paul's Church. 2012, signed a reciprocal lease for UD for the use of the Old River Fields and tennis courts, installed the Far Hills Business District Decorative Streetlights. 2013, elimination of the Oakwood Estate Tax Lights. 2013, elimination of the Oakwood Estate Tax. You didn't do that personally, I don't think. First year of Oakwood's Farmers Market, construction of the Routsong Retail Center. 2014, Top of the Hill Preschool opened at Lutheran Church of Our Savior. 2015, completed the Far Hills Business District Street Tree Replacement Project, construction of Lane Stadium. 2016, accepted the donation of the Virginia Hollinger Tennis Facility. In 2017, settlement agreement for condos and office buildings at Point Oakwood and Sugar Camp, approval of the three-story office building at Sugar Camp, approval of the 84-unit condominium complex at Point Oakwood, construction and dedication of Cook Park, completion of the Schroyer Road Reconstruction. Every significant project that has happened in Oakwood in the last 35 years has been under this man's direction, and his insight and ability to, you know, obtain consensus throughout the community as to what needs to be done. It's, it's an unbelievable list of accomplishments. Every employee that works at our city currently, with the exception of two people, Carol Collins and Alice Young, were hired in part or entirely by J. Weiskircher. Congratulations, sir. It's not your turn yet. Our, it's not your turn yet. Our former mayor Judy Cook would like to say a word or two. What, CJ?
Hey, Jay, you see what happens when you retire? You got no more power. You got nothing. There was a famous line attributed to Bill Clinton that says, "Everything has been said, but not everyone has said it." Welcome, Judy.
Thank you. You know, the first time in my life that I really got to know Jay was when I was a citizen member of the Planning Commission. And I'd like to think that perhaps some of my reflections on that time speaks for the hundreds of citizens out there that are not going to have a chance to thank Jay personally, but feel so grateful to all the things that he has done. I think one of my first impressions of Jay was how professional he was. You know, Jay always approaches things as business at hand, and yet somehow in doing it, you always felt that he was approaching you to help you. And lots of times, we all needed it. We needed to understand the laws that we were trying to obey and trying to make sure that everybody understood. And Jay was always willing to be the teacher, so patient. And the fact that he was always there, you could, there was never a time that he was too busy, or couldn't be bothered. He was always there as if you were the most important thing he had to do that day. And people appreciated that. They, they learned also to know that they could always trust what Jay said, that he did not have an alter agenda, that he was there with their best interest and the city's best interest at hand. And that made such a difference in terms of how you could move forward together in some of the things that you had to do. I went on to spend all those many years as city council, et cetera, as I know you have, and enjoying Jay's great mentoring. And I feel so tremendously blessed to have him as part of the time that I worked with the city. And I would, all that long list of things that he was part of and what he did, you know, is not just something that someone did because they were here for 35 years. I would say that each one of them is sort of a benchmark in recognition of someone who has super skills and super devotion to this city. And we are all so grateful for it, and we thank him. Thanks to Jay.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Cook. We will, we'll now allow you three minutes of rebuttal. But I will give you the deference if it's longer.
Oh, you guys want to talk first or after?
After. We can do it after.
Yes.
This is going to be tough, but I think I'll, I think I'll be able to get through it. Norb, Mayor, Mrs. Cook, thanks so much for your, your very kind words. When I saw the resolution in last Friday's council newsletter packet, all I kept thinking about was how much time and effort it took for Norb and the office staff to, to complete that chronology. So I very much appreciate that, and recognized how much work that was. Over the past several weeks, my family and I have been humbled by the outpouring of acknowledgements, well wishes, and gifts on my retirement. When you love what you do and the people you work with, 35 years goes by very quickly. I think we estimated that I attended approximately 550 council meetings over the years, and in every meeting, sitting on the dais were five elected officials who were there not for personal gain or notoriety, but simply to serve the best interests of the community. As a city staff, we never had to be concerned about political agendas. Every council member I had the pleasure to work with had a single purpose, which was, and continues to be, to make decisions based solely on the interests of the community. I've said it many times before, and I'll say it one more time, that most citizens have no idea how much time and effort you put forth for a position with a very nominal salary. I thank all of you and your predecessors from the bottom of my heart for your guidance and unwavering support of me and the rest of staff, and we carried out our day-to-day duties. I said to Norb last Friday that I thought for the past 16 years that he and I made a very good team. Stability has always been a benchmark of the community. Norb has done a tremendous job as city manager. He has guided the community through some very challenging times. He is ably supported by an excellent and committed staff that includes Rob Jacks, Carol Collins, Cindy Stafford, and most recently, the most recent addition, Chief, Chief Allen Hill. I'm confident that my replacement will fit right in, and will bring talents and skills that are unique to that person. Over my years here, we've had a lot of excellent employees come and go, but like any successful organization, we've been able to fill those holes with equally talented individuals. That's been the case in Public Works, the Safety Department, Leisure Services, Administration, and the office staff. The ceremony this evening, acknowledging the actions of the safety officers responding to a medical emergency here in council chambers during a recent Planning Commission hearing, speaks to the quality of the people we have working for the city. Without the multi-talents of the responding PSOs, the outcome of that medical event probably would have been much different. Congratulations for all your, your work. I could go on all evening about the wonderful citizens I have met and worked with during my time here. Oakwood is a special place because we have citizens who care about the community, and unselfishly give back their time and talents by serving on the many city boards and commissions. They receive no compensation, as the mayor stated earlier, and only serve because of their love for the community. I have been honored to have had the opportunity to serve with hundreds of these citizens over the years. Their efforts and contributions are an integral part in keeping Oakwood special. I leave here with nothing but fond memories, and a much greater appreciation for what a special place this is. God bless me in bringing me here to Oakwood 35 and a half years ago, and I've cherished every day I've had the privilege to work here. I wish all of you continued success, recognizing that the city remains in very capable hands. Thank you very much for everything you've done for me and my family. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Yes, I do. Can't let Jay get out without saying anything. As, as was mentioned before, I think the mayor said, every significant accomplishment in, in the city of Oakwood over the last 35 years, Jay's had a hand in. One of the important things I think to remember, or at least that I will always remember, is that he also had a hand in all the small accomplishments as well. All the day-to-day things that, over that amount of time, I've, I've worked with him for 10 years now, the small things that he did on a day-to-day basis were the things that allowed myself, and I think everybody on council, and all the other city staff, to be the very best that they could be. He took a lot of the weight off of us for the things that, you know, we didn't have to track down because Jay just had it there. He knew that we needed it. So having that ability to do the day-to-day things humbly and professionally, I very much appreciate, and that's what I will remember, Jay.
Councilmember Stevens?
You know, I've known Jay for, I gotta call it over 25 years. I don't remember the first time I met him. God sakes, he was in eighth grade, I was in eighth grade when he started working here, so I don't remember those days. But, you know, I just know that in the last eight years, I've become closer to Jay being on council. And I know he was my go-to guy if Norb wasn't around. I needed that quick answer on something. And it's just like what Vice Mayor Byington said, he knows everything. He's very organized, professional, intelligent, and so dedicated to the city of Oakwood. To compliment that even more, he's always been consistent and loyal to his job and the citizens he's worked with for all these years. I get comments all the time from citizens about our staff, and, and Jay is mentioned on a regular basis. His knowledge and experience cannot be replaced. When Norb told us he was leaving, I started freaking out. I can't imagine what Norb was thinking. It's going to be a team effort to replace such an asset and a wonderful person like Jay. And Jay, see, now everybody's finding out I'm a big teddy bear. I wish you and your family all the best in your next chapter, and go play more golf.
Councilmember Hilton?
I don't think I can.
Okay.
But he knows I love him. He's been great.
Councilmember Epley?
I normally don't make too many comments.
Yes, yes.
But I believe I'm the newest member of council to have worked with Jay, so it's only been a couple of years for me. But I think Jay has a lot more stories in him than in the past 35 years than he's let on. So I've offered to be his ghostwriter.
Oh, great.
Someday after a nice round of golf, give me a call. We'll have some dinner, we'll talk some stories, I'll write it down, we'll put something together. Congratulations.
I could see pre-sale number one New York Times bestseller. I can see it. Yes, okay. All right. Well, thank you again, Jay. We really appreciate all of your efforts on our behalf, and, and I look forward to playing a round of golf with you so you can drag me around the course. So we appreciate that. All right. Okay, so next on our agenda is an ordinance to approve. Oh, I'm sorry. We still need to vote and approve that resolution that you read.
It's been so long.
It's been so long since I read it, yes. Well, I will accept the motion to second that resolution.
So moved.
All right. And Lori, let's, let's have you call the role. This is that important.
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
It's always good to have a lawyer around you. Okay. So next, we have an ordinance to approve the income tax credit reduction factor, and Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes, Your Honor. This is a second reading of an ordinance that was introduced at our December 11 council meeting. It would reduce the credit that Oakwood gives for income tax paid to other cities. In Ohio, residents pay local income tax where they work and where they live. Oakwood currently gives our residents a tax credit for all local income taxes paid elsewhere, up to the full amount of Oakwood's 2.5% income tax. In other words, if a person pays taxes where they work, that amount is credited against the taxes that they owe the city of Oakwood. This ordinance would reduce the credit using a factor of .9. What it means is this, every resident who currently gets a credit will continue to get a credit, but their credit will be multiplied by 0.9. In other words, there is a slight reduction of their credit, but they will still get 90% of the credit that they've always received. This reduction factor does three other critically important things. First, it protects Oakwood's revenue from reductions that happen automatically when surrounding cities increase their income tax rate. Secondly, it ensures that all Oakwood residents who have taxable income will pay at least 1/4 of a percent to Oakwood. And finally, it ensures that no one's local tax burden will increase by more than 1/4 of a percent. That last point bears repeating, no one's taxes will go up by more than 1/4 of a percent as a result of this ordinance. This ordinance is necessary, is a necessary step to stabilizing city finances after losing nearly $3 million of funding per year due to the 2013 repeal of the Ohio state tax, state cuts to the local government fund, and other state cuts, and after tax, and after tax rate increases in 24 other cities have cost the city of Oakwood nearly $800,000 in annual revenue. We have looked at this issue from every direction, and reviewed a number of approaches with our 35-member Citizen Budget Review Committee. We concluded that this approach, which has the full support of our Budget Review Committee, is the most balanced and appropriate way to spread the impact over the broadest base of residents, yet the smallest way possible. This is a second reading of this ordinance, so I would make the motion that the council adopted this evening.
Do I have a second? Second. Our co-chair of the Budget Review Committee, Mr. Frappwell, is here. Would you, do you have any comments you wish to give to council before we deliberate on this?
Good evening, everyone. Obviously, nobody wants to pay more taxes. But when the facts were presented to us, and there was a large amount of analysis, we felt, the budget committee felt, that this was a, a compromise that the city could live with, and that the taxpayers could live with. Again, nobody's happy about paying taxes, but with the city of Oakwood losing so much money, with the other cities raising their income taxes, we felt the 90% compromise would, would be good for the city going forward.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Frappwell? Thank you for your service as Budget Review Committee co-chair for quite a long time. I have some comments that I'd like to make. I didn't know if you wanted me to go first, or if anybody else would want to go first.
You can go first.
All right. I support this ordinance, and if we vote to approve this here shortly... First of all, before I do that, we do have a second, correct? Did I do that right? Perfect. This reduced credit option will stabilize our financial situation and provide for future city property tax renewals only, no new city property taxes, and protect our city from revenue losses if surrounding cities increase their income tax rate. It also endorses the financial stewardship of our city staff who work tirelessly on our behalf of all the residents. It's important to understand how we arrived at this point. In my 2012 State of the City address, I noted that there are people in the Ohio General Assembly in the current administration who do not agree with the right of Oakwood and other charter cities throughout Ohio to provide services under the Home Rule provisions of the Ohio Constitution, provisions which were established over 100 years ago. They believe there are too many local governments and school districts in Ohio, and plan to force local government and school district consolidation by reducing our revenue streams. My comments then were prescient. In 1935, after a two-year debate, local governments and school districts reduced their local property taxes by 1/3 in exchange for a 3% sales tax, 40% of which would go to the local government fund. In 2010, the governor and Ohio General Assembly broke its 85-year covenant with local governments by keeping the majority of the local government fund for themselves. Local governments were no longer partners with the state, but instead expenditures which needed to be eliminated. Effective January 2013, the state of Ohio eliminated the Ohio estate tax, 80% of which benefited local governments. At the time, this accounted for about 20% of our revenue. At the time, this accounted for about 20% of our revenue. Current and former Oakwood city councils prudently used those funds to build our public works facility, renovate and improve our city building, acquire the Old River playing fields. We allowed a city property tax issue to expire. We increased our operating reserves and ensured that no city debt is there for future generations. In 2013 and 2014, we fought and were unsuccessful in opposing House Bill 5. This poorly-written legislation by lobbyists for the Ohio Chamber of Congress and the Ohio Society of Certified Public Accountants did not promote municipal tax uniformity, did not reduce complexity for businesses, and did not create jobs. We commended our state representative Jim Butler and our state senator Peggy Lainer at the time for opposing this legislation. In 2014, excuse me, I reported to the citizens of Oakwood, "It is now clear the Ohio General Assembly is not our partner in providing services to the citizens of Ohio." To the citizens of Ohio. They are, in fact, an existential threat to local governments. We are very concerned the next General Assembly will continue their assault on local governments. We know they want to eliminate municipal income taxes entirely, or absent that, eliminate our ability to collect taxes locally and set our own rates and credits for taxes paid to other cities. Like clockwork, in 2017, the General Assembly passed a centralized municipal tax collection for certain businesses. We testify to no avail that the entire purpose of this proposal was to take control over the administrative process of municipal income tax, which will benefit special interest groups and create a new stream of revenue for the state of Ohio, all at the expense of cities. Two weeks ago, a judge in Franklin County issued a preliminary injunction against the state of Ohio for their recent actions. The case will be adjudicated later this year. Although we have not increased our city income tax rate since 1984, 24 other cities where our citizens work have increased their income tax rates. Because we give the 100% credit for taxes paid to other jurisdictions, this tax, their tax increases have reduced our revenue by about $800,000 annually. These cities include Blue Ash, Brookville, Centerville, Clayton, Cleveland, Columbus, Dayton, Evendale, Fairborn, Franklin, Huber Heights, Kettering, Mason, Miamisburg, Moraine, Oxford, Pickwa, Sidney, Springfield, Tip City, Bandelia, West Carrollton, and Xenia. Oakwood residents work in all of these cities, even Cleveland. Dayton, Kettering, Moraine, and Centerville account for over $600,000 of this $800,000 revenue shortfall. Although it is never a pleasant task to raise income taxes, again, it has not occurred in Oakwood since 1984. In a representative form of government, we are elected to represent the best interest of our residents. And if we do not do so, the residents will replace us, as provided by our charter and laws of the state of Ohio. I concur with Vice Mayor Byington that this ordinance is the most balanced and appropriate way to spread the impact over the broadest base of residents. Do you have additional comments?
As was mentioned earlier, several years ago, there was a tax credit plan before this council that I was not able to support. While I fully understood the varying factors that led to its proposal and completely agreed with the needs those factors created, I could not support the details of that particular plan that was ultimately put forward. As part of my no vote, I openly shared my specific concerns at that time. However, the version's subsequent failure did not make the underlying need for a viable budget solution go away. In fact, many of the factors which we predicted would steadily get worse and exacerbate that need have ultimately come to fruition. This council, our incredible city staff, and the hard-working volunteers of our Citizen Budget Review Committee have worked diligently since that previous vote to reshape the specifics of that proposal into a revised solution that best serves the broadest contingent of Oakwood residents as possible. It has certainly not been an easy process. There has been a tremendous amount of quantitative analysis, detailed fiscal modeling, and exhaustive public discussions that have gone into the formation of the plan which is before us this evening. And unlike our so-called leaders in Washington and Columbus, we did not hurriedly or haphazardly throw this plan together. We put in the hard work. We took our time to make sure that the process was thorough and inclusive. Doing so allowed us the opportunity to properly present and vet all of our options with a wide range of Oakwood residents. This is not to say that everyone we have discussed our findings with has liked our conclusions or the resulting policy suggestions that have come from them. But I can definitively say that everyone who has taken the time to contact me through calls, emails, or in person, and I'm guessing the same is true with all my fellow council members, has had their thoughts and opinions heard and thoughtfully considered. We do not hide from open discussion. We relish it. It makes us better at our jobs. In this toxic political environment that our country is going through right now, I'm extremely proud of the fact that at the local level, the meaningful involvement and active participation of our citizens allows this council and all of our city staff to engage in true public service. It is not politics as usual. Ultimately, leadership boils down to confronting the challenges that immediately face our community and doing what we believe is truly best for our city and its future prosperity. It is that charge which is going to guide my vote this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens, do you have any comments?
No, I do not.
Mrs. Hilton, do you have comments?
I do not.
Mr. Epley, do you have any comments?
No, Your Honor.
Hearing none, Lori, would you call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation. We have no staff report this evening, but we do have a city manager report. Mr. Klops?
Your Honor, I'll be very brief. That was wonderful, again, recognizing our Public Safety Department this evening. I'd also like to commend Carol Collins and her staff on putting together another wonderful brochure of offerings at our community center. You know, every property owner in Oakwood gets that three times a year, and, you know, sometimes you get, you know, a little bit lazy in looking through that. But the other day, I looked through their most recent edition, and it's just loaded full of outstanding programs and offerings. And I know one of Carol's challenges to herself and her staff each year is to, you know, come up with new and creative ideas for upcoming year programs, and they continue to do that year in and year out. And I want to thank Carol publicly for that. It's a small but mighty Oakwood community center. And then a shout-out also to our Public Works Department. Needless to say, with this weather we've had, there's been need to have some folks come in on overtime. At our last meeting, I mentioned a water main break. We had another water service leak a couple weeks ago. Nothing recently, thank goodness. But we've had folks in late at night taking care of our streets. And, again, we have just a wonderful crew down there. Jay alluded to them earlier. Just wonderful employees who we can rely on in our time of need. So my thanks to the Public Works Department. That's all I have.
Any questions for our city manager? Hearing none, we will now go to council comments. Councilmember Epley?
Thank you, Your Honor. No comments tonight.
Councilmember Hilton?
No comments, Your Honor.
Councilmember Stevens?
Just a couple things. First, I'd like to congratulate Captain Kevin Perzinski, a much-deserved promotion. He's a good man. He's going to do a great job in the management role. So Captain Hill, you've done a great job already in your early career, so well done. He's a good man. Known him a while. Second, I'd like to thank the citizens of Oakwood for re-electing me for another four years. I do enjoy this job. However, the negatives on it are the time it takes away from my wife and children, and I want to thank them for supporting me, you know, because I do miss some events due to this position. But they understand, and they're behind me all the way. And I also need to thank my parents, who I work with in a family business and this job definitely during the day and at certain times in the evenings, and different does take away from the business. But we work it out, and it's worth it because I enjoy being on city council, working with all of you and city staff. So thank you again.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Just a lot of congratulations. Congratulations to Jay, to his family, getting to have him back. Congratulations to Ann and Rob, whose family don't get them back as often. It all works out in the end. And to Mr. Stevens' comment, the Oakwood citizens, we are very fortunate to have, as I mentioned earlier, you know, very active, very caring, very engaged citizens, and I genuinely thank God every day for that. It makes my job so much easier to have folks who are willing to take their time, take their efforts, their talents, and share those with me to allow me to do a better job.
Thank you. I would also like to thank council for re-electing Steve and I as vice mayor and mayor. And I don't know if you need one of those little Dorothy Lane cards or not, but I got this. Did you get these? Did you guys get this? I got one of these in the mail, and Dorothy Lane Market's celebrating their 70th anniversary this year. So there's a resolution in Norman Maine's future, so I'm going to have to look at this. But I went through this. This is really cool. They've got a whole timeline of all the things that happened in the history of the store, now three stores. So if you haven't seen it, you can go up to Dorothy Lane Market and say you want to see the brochure. And I know that the Oakwood Register is not publishing this week. I appreciate Brian showing up, and with all the good news here in Oakwood, perhaps you should run a special edition tomorrow anyway. But I look forward to reading your reports, and I thought you explained the income tax credit limitation perfectly, for the record. But, so, with that, our next meeting is going to be on February 5, and we are adjourned. Happy New Year to all of you.